Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 2nd meeting of the Village of New Paltz Planning Board. Tonight, we have some administrative business. Getting an update on some new policies and zoning code, followed by one public hearing and two application reviews. To begin, the meeting minutes for the August 5th meeting and the August 19th meeting were completed. Does anyone have any changes or comments on those? In that case, could I get a motion to approve the August 5th and August 19th meeting minutes?
So moved.
Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, do we have any updates from our Village Board and Olson County Planning Board?
Hello, everyone. The County Planning Board meets tomorrow, so you'll update there. I'll just come over. The Board did review your policy in terms of public speaking. Looks great. My personal opinion is I think it could go three minutes as the and the Thor at your desire. We've used to have three minutes back many years ago as the time. I was having a lot, but that's completely up to you. In this room on Friday, 4:30, the Olson County Industrial Development Corp will be having a public hearing to talk about a pilot to be perhaps given to 151 North Chestnut Street, our department complex there. New Paltz has a long history of resisting pilots, as you may recall over the years. It's a very odd time, I think, having it on a Friday night at 4:30. Might not draw out as many people as one might hopefully. But please, if you can attend, it's an important meeting. There's a 15-year pilot proposed, if I've looked at my charge correctly. With the pilot, without the pilot, it would be about $10 million in taxes without with the pilot would be $5 million over a 15-year period. So that's a significant amount of money that you may want to look into. I can send you the application if you wish. Which sort of spells it out quite clearly in their plan.
Sure.
So those are meant to Mount Smiths.
And we'll get back to the pilot. What's taxing authorities are impacted by?
Welcome.
The county, the town, and the village.
School.
And school. Do they all lose an equal amount of money?
I'm not sure when to break down this, but they lose all this money. I can tell they haven't done the cost benefit analysis yet, which is supposed to come after the public hearing to see how maybe this is what we're going to get back. If the development happens, this is what we might believe. The development doesn't end.
Who does the cost benefit analysis, the IDA?
Yeah.
I'm curious, because I always felt like I don't have enough information of these things in terms of like the current vacancy rate, for example, and like what would happen if these places were deliberately held vacant, as I know has happened in many other places and is happening here to a certain extent.
Sure.
And I would really, I'd like to know that if it's possible. What's the vacancy rate? I mean, the actual vacancy rate.
In the village now?
Yeah. Because it just seems like, well, it seems like a lot to me.
I think if you, if you, pattern for progress, as it's a nonprofit agency in the region, it's like a five-county region, has done an annual, as well as the County Planning Department have done annual studies of housing. So you could go to either of their sites and probably find the most recent information about either of those questions.
I'd be interested in the application, but I don't understand what they propose. I'll send you the application. It's pretty straightforward. There's a couple charts and columns and it's a little confusing, but my experience with them, Olson County IDA is they're very responsive to public comments. So if you can't attend, then submit something in writing and don't make it part of the record. They also take full ones too. So I follow up quite a bit just in telephone calls. So you're welcome to.
There's a comment in our packet from Kitty Brown.
She's online as well. She told me she was going to read it tonight as well.
Okay, what I don't understand is what developers lawsuit against it. Like, I don't, it's just out of context.
It was the part five, the part point, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The city court decision that she's referencing.
So, so the developer who is now asking for the pilot on Friday night?
These are, they're not the same.
Totally different? Okay. That was not.
I think she was referencing it just for my opinion, that she can clarify that it was a point of reference as to what happened when the town sued over the pilot.
Are you talking about the, what's now the New Paltz apartments? When you say park?
No, no.
Where are you talking about?
It doesn't, it never happened.
Never happened. Okay.
There's a file I can share with the two, I can share with the chair, and I can share with the rest. Or I just sent it to all, the history of objections to pilots. Going back to 2014, I believe, something like that.
Yeah, I'm interested.
That's, it's very interesting. There's been a lot of debates and there's getting a lot of traction on social media.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, do we have any updates from the Environment and Policy Board?
No, I don't believe there's been a meeting. They have not, trouble meeting forums. They're definitely, they need new members.
There's still.
Okay.
Do we have any updates from the, our Director of Planning and Zoning?
Yeah, I just, from having been the town supervisor, I just want to clarify the way pilots work, that there seems to be a little bit of a misunderstanding. Municipalities don't lose tax money because your tax rate is your total budget and the amount to be collected from taxes divided by your assessed value. What happens though with the pilot is the assessed value on that property remains at the current state, whatever the assessed value is right now, with any increases of percentage than every other property. So when people say we're losing tax dollars, you're not, but at complete buildout, the value of that property would go up. So you're not collecting more tax dollars, but you're collecting tax dollars from that entity that the rest of your taxpayers are paying less. So it's, it's, I just wanted to clarify, it's not a reduction. It's just a proportional change. So I just wanted to be sure that that's understood. I'm not making an opinion one way or the other, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. That's certainly up to you guys in the Village Board. But just wanted to clarify the process of how the idea, and over that period of time, it will increase at year, certain years to 10% of the total value, to 20% of the total value to by the time it's, if it is indeed a 15-year, at the end of year 15, then it's full assessed value. So that's how a pilot works. They also can apply for construction sales taxes reduced, which is the biggest impact of sales tax reduction is to the city of Kingston and the Olson County, the municipalities, as the mayor can tell you, get such a tiny percentage of sales tax.
Can I just ask for why, because we're spending a lot of time on this? My understanding is the IDA is making the decision. We are not being asked to make a decision about the pilot. So that's, I appreciate the clarification. I just wanted to show we're not being asked to make a decision.
Correct. I think the point was just to use this forum to notify the public that it's coming up and if people want it out, right?
The IDA has to do seeker audit. They either will adopt seeker that we did on the project, or they will conduct their own seeker. But because they are making a decision, they have to seeker.
And was the, was the idea of applying for a pilot disclosed when this board conducted seeker?
Not to my knowledge, but I do know there's new investors involved. So that decision may or may not have been made after they got their approvals from us. The only reason I know that is because, yeah, the only reason I know that there's new investors is because they reached out to us to let us know that there's new investors.
Thank you.
So the only other thing I have to tell you, you may, I've seen an email from Nicole this afternoon. The Village Board voted at their last meeting to extend a stipend to volunteer boards, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Shetree Commission, and the Affordable Housing Board. Those are five boards that have decision-making administration powers in the code. The other boards are advisory to the Village Board, so we started with that. This was the recommendation that I made to the mayor based on what some other communities are doing. It is a nominal amount. It is 20 for public, it's available for public records. So it's $20 for members and 25 for the chair for a meeting. It will be paid quarterly. If anyone for any reason does not want to receive this stipend, I simply need an email from you that we can put with the records to say that you were rejecting your stipend. If you choose to. Some people may want to or may have to for various reasons, then I'll leave that, leave it at that. But I want to thank the mayor and the Village Board for starting this process. And I think it's, you guys spend a lot of time here, and I think it's, it's a worthwhile thing. So. And then Zach, do you want me to just do the code update now and then go back to the policy or do you want?
Let's, let's talk about the policy.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. And there are no town planning board updates?
Uh, no, I have not been as diligent as I hoped to be. So apologies.
Understood. So next, I'd like to go to the public comment policy. We I think we have a final document and at this point, given now that we have input from the Village Board, I believe we're ready to vote to adopt or not adopt it. Are there any final questions before we take that step?
Um, I brought this up at the beginning, but then I forgot all about it. It was a question as to whether someone could cede their time. Like if you're allowed three minutes, but you have a lot to say, and if someone else agrees with you rather than the repeating, which is what was, what this was targeted to eliminate, could they say, I'll cede my time to this other person? Or is that to my personal preference for the day now?
Yeah.
I've seen that be a slippery slope. If people want to coordinate and each say a different thing, then they could certainly do that. But yeah.
It also involves a lot of exact timing and record keeping on somebody's part. Normally, if somebody wanted to go past three minutes, the board would just either allow them to continue or not, depending on the situation.
Oh, okay.
And we have addressed that.
All right, fine. Then I'll follow. Thank you, Rich, for the work on this.
Yeah, thanks, Taylor. Awesome.
Yeah. In that case, I'd like to get a motion to adopt the guidelines for comment, public hearing and public comment as written.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now let's turn to zoning code. Can you give us an update on that?
Yeah. So as I said at the last meeting, the board, the Village Board has been meeting a couple times. To the point that I have sent you guys a link to, not a, excuse me, a Google folder. If anybody couldn't get it in or didn't get the link, let me know. I will continue as we make updates with the Village Board. I will continue to post new documents with the date attached, like the ones heard are through August 27th, which was their last Village Board meeting. It's a lot of information. If anybody has any questions or wants me to walk you through it, let me know. At some point, an official referral will come from the Village Board, but they wanted you guys to have like the opportunity to start looking at it. I don't know if we actually are considering if the official referral or not, defer to the mayor or the Village Board on that, but everything is color-coded in the zoning chapter section. I understand it's quite lengthy, but look through it. I think we should have, maybe it's, it's up to the board, but if you want to have a special meeting where you just go through it. Carrie had asked at the last meeting, one of the requirements of a code change, a land use, is that it's referred to the planning board for comment. You don't have to have comments. You can say we have no comments, but I'm thinking since this is the code that you guys are going to administer and be a part of, you may or may not want to review it thoroughly in that conference. So there's no real timeframe at the moment, except we'd like to get this adopted before the year end. And the Village Board has to go through public hearings and referrals. And so we pretty much should try to get them some answers by mid-October as as it's, you know, if that's possible. So I'll, I'll leave it for that for you guys to tell me how you want to proceed. If you want to do them individually and bring all your comments together and just go through the comments. If you want me to walk you through the code and sort of highlight the changes. There is a bullet point document that does the, what I'm calling the 10-mile view, that really does the highlights of the changes. So. So that, up to you guys.
I mean, I think that this is going to be a fairly lengthy discussion. My my recommendation was we can have each schedule a special meeting where we all come in having reviewed it on our own and then are able to walk through it text by section and ask Mike and Emily any questions that we have and put together our comments during that meeting. Does anyone have different?
No, I think that's good. That's fine if we could get confirmation that it's the official referred rather than.
Well, okay.
He said.
No, I think the idea would be you guys should take a look at the working draft now. And then once we get much further along, then we can give you the official, because this way, you know, no one's on our end. There's, you're, like, we could both in parallel do a review.
Okay, I got it. I tried to make comments on the document, but they didn't take. So I just took notes by hand on paper. And I'm wondering what would be the best?
Um, let me see if I can turn it on so you guys can't make comments within the document.
Yeah, I think that, that would be helpful.
That's the best.
Um, if we could just have it in line and then go through it that way. I still think that we'll, we'll need a meeting to sort of talk about those, those comments together and then compile one, you know, list of suggestions that we send back to the Village Board. But so is this something we should schedule now?
How about I find some dates and I'll do a Google poll with everybody? You can quit putting the dates, you know, check yes or no for the dates available, because it probably should be here in this meeting room. So I'll check the dates. It's available. Does that work for everybody? I'll get it through by the end of the week and then we can go from there.
Sure, sounds good. Thank you.
And then we, feel free to start reviewing for points of law. And I'm going to send it to Will as well, but I'm going to wait till they go one more meeting through the Village Board yet. Come and send it to Will.
Okay.
Next, we have a request for extension of subdivision approval for 147, 149, 151 North Chestnut Street for two 90-day periods of time. So essentially, the subdivision approval would be extended until March 14th, 2026.
This is the property that is the subject of the pilot?
Yes, it is. It is. And I mean, maybe is, is there any more context we need about?
No, this is for the subdivision only. So the site plan and special, and special use approvals are good for one year. The Village Code has a somewhat unique thing in that it says subdivision approval is only good for 90 days. They haven't finished their, their maps and that's about to expire. So they're asking for the 180-day extension to get that completed at the same time as they do all their site plan and special use maps, which are good for one year. So.
So this would, this would finish out to the end of the year or the site?
This would, would renew, this would renew the subdivision map, which is only the merging of the two lots. That's all they're doing with the subdivision until March 14th. And they would have until that time to finish their documents, get them to us for signature, and then file them with the county.
Okay. So if there are no objections to that, then like to get a motion approving the extension of subdivision approval for PB 2407?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, actually, since we have a resolution, is, does this need to be a?
Your fault. Doesn't have to be, but it can be.
Then let's just leave it as is and let's unite us. Next up, we have our public comment.
Yeah. Kitty Brown wanted to speak. There was no one signed up earlier. Kitty, if you wanted to speak, can you unmute yourself?
Hello. Hi. Yeah. I, I think I misunderstood the agenda. I thought this was coming earlier. Anyway, I'm here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak during public comment. My comments are mine alone and do not represent the views of any group, board, or committee with which I am associated. On August 27th, you received correspondence from a group called Westview. I think that is the same group that is seeking a pilot for its project under the name of 151 North Chestnut Holdings. The applicant is required to notify affected taxing authorities. You may have received a certified copy of their IDA application today. Here is an excerpt from the court order dismissing the developer's lawsuit against the town of New Paltz Planning Board. The excerpt that's relative is that when the project was first proposed, it was intended to remain on the tax rolls as fully taxable. The proposed IDA tax exemption would result in substantially less revenue to the town than had the Park Point project remained on the tax rolls. That lawsuit against the Town Planning Board was dismissed. If the applicant, either as 151 North Chestnut Holdings LLC or as Westview LLC, did not state its intention to request a pilot in its original application, I believe you have the precedent, the right and the responsibility to oppose this pilot at the September 5th IDA public hearing in the room in which you're sitting right now at 4:30. If you don't feel you have enough information to prepare a statement, please ask the IDA to hold the public hearing open. I have COVID. That's the longest I've been able to talk for a week. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah. But again, just to be clear, the developer that she was referring to was, is not the same developer that was from a lawsuit many years ago for a different project?
That is clear, but the precedent is there that you can't submit an application and not disclose that you will be seeking tax relief and then come back after you have approvals to seek it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to make a public comment?
There's no one else signed up at the moment.
Okay, anyone online? In that case, I'd like to move.
Mr. Chairman, is there any question?
Sure.
Is that your opinion, Emily? That the developer who does not disclose to us that they subsequently will see the pilot? We have some recourse?
So I want to research it a little bit before I give you a firm answer, but this is what I think to be the case. So if in the seeker process, you can consider the financial impacts of the project, right? And so the Will Marry case, I think that's what is being referred to. The, the situation there was that the pilot was going to be so significant that they found that village services would be affected. They wouldn't be able to provide the, the services that they had in the past. And I believe that for that reason, I'm not sure if it was a cost stack or they eventually divided the project, something to that effect. So I think the point is that it can be significant in a seeker review. As our seeker review is finished, we already did that. And there, people can always change their project. It happens all the time that people decide to either change a project or go, you know, get a, ask for a pilot or whatever. If we, if this board were to decide that that pilot would be significant enough that it might affect the seeker decision, we may have the authority to go back and revisit that seeker decision. But we don't have to. And, and we, I don't think that it would give us any authority to oppose the pilot. That's, you know, that, that can be requested. The question is only whether the seeker review was adequate.
Do you know when that court case was, the Will Marry one?
Yeah, it was 2015.
Okay.
But I know, but I'm going to pursue this a bit. What you just described to me, Emily, was a pilot payment could have such a substantial financial impact on municipality that it could affect the services the municipality provides to the resident. Mike, did I understand you just said, not two minutes ago, that there's no financial impact on the municipality?
No, that actually wasn't exactly what I said. What I said is the amount to be collected by taxes is a function of the budget minus the amount to be generated from other sources, and that's the amount to be collected with taxes. When people say this pilot is going to cost the village or the school X number of dollars, that's only true if the service, the budget is also going to decrease. Because the, it's, there's a mis, misnomer that the tax rate is set not involving the budget. I mean, I, I, it's, it's math and I could churn it out on a piece of paper a lot easier than I can say it verbally. But the tax rate is derived from the amount to be collected by taxes divided by the assessed value of the community to the $1,000 rate. And that's how the so much per thousand is, is arrived at. When you get your tax bill, you see your assessed value and you see a dollar and a half per thousand, and they're multiplied together. Well, my point is, is if a project is valued at, let's just say 500,000, and at the end of construction, it's going to be a million. And I'm not saying, just using those numbers. The value is still at the 500,000 that's used for taxes. Over time, it's going to generate more and more and more. But if it was valued at a million dollars right away, that changes one factor of the equation, the assessed value. It doesn't change the amount to be collected by taxes. So what it does is it lowers the so much per thousand and every other taxpayer pays a little less. And that developer pays their production. and every other taxpayer pays a little less and that developer pays their production. But it doesn't raise the amount of money that a municipality collects.
Can I take this down? So basically, they just keep paying the same amount they're paying in the undeveloped state and then over time slowly start paying more. But in the interim, there could be a demand on services because you have all these new residents that make, you know, the and the, the in, the increase in revenue doesn't match up with that increase in services. I think that's.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, well, I think for those who are listening and those in the audience, I don't think we should downplay the financial impact of a pilot payment. If there was really de minimis impact of a pilot payment, why would the builders oppose it? What, and if there's a de minimis impact, why would the developer ask for it? So my point is, I think there is an impact and I think it can be dramatic. Because somebody's gonna pay for the, for the cost of services. Do they always go up? Yeah, pretty much they always go up. If developers playing a, a flat rate for five years for one year, two years, everybody else is gonna make up the difference because the costs are gonna go up. So somebody benefits. And somebody pays.
Well, I'll be glad to look into, you know, in the next couple of days, if this board has any authority at this stage of the game. But I think that, you know, really it, it would be the, the village board and the village residents that would have more of a concern at this stage about the tax revenue as opposed to this, this board's role.
Yeah, I would agree with Emily that under the seeker, that's the only this board doing site plan and special use, financial impacts is not something that is, comes into this board's purview because you're a land use board. But under seeker, absolutely, you could consider.
Is this the time, because this is an application, is it time to ask an unfollowed question regarding this project?
Yeah, yeah. So you had asked, uh, we had, we explored whether reopening seeker was an option based on the fact that this was closed prior to the um, application or during the application. Is it, is an option, is there an option to have some intermediate approach, which is that we review at the board level the potential impact of the pilot versus the financial analysis we did in the context of the seeker review, just determine whether we might want to make the effort to reopen seeker?
Right, that's, that's kind of the, the, the seeker regulations talk about whether you either um, amend or rescind a NECD, but it's based on already having decided if there was an impact. I, I'm just not sure at this stage of the game, to be honest, after a NECD, if, if we even have that authority anymore. Um, I mean, the, the IDA would certainly have to look at the environmental impact.
The other recourse obviously is that we just voiced to the IDA that we would be prudent for them to do a complete seeker review and not adopt the art because we didn't have complete information.
Yeah, that's what we did. Yeah.
You know, and in the meantime, we are reviewing the entire municipal code here because it relates to land use. Is it legal for us to put something in our code that says you must disclose to us during the review of the financial, financial impact of this project on our community, you must disclose to us? If you want to see. And I understand. All I'm saying is let's look into that.
Sure. No, it's not, it's more that the applicant might not know. They might, you know, like in this case, it sounds like they, the project changed hands and a different decision was made, you know, down the line. So how that would affect, and we could look at whether there's something to put into our code. Things do change.
Yeah, could change circumstances, obligations. Wouldn't logically having it somehow connected to the occupancy rate make sense? I mean, if that's where they're getting their revenue to pay the taxes and that's, and the occupancy of the building is directly impacting the goods and services that are required by it, wouldn't it make more sense to have it based on that? If that's what you're really talking about. I mean, obviously, the developer wouldn't be interested if, if they weren't going to actually pay less taxes. And if they're paying less, then we're getting less and there's no way around that. It's a, it's a zero-sum game.
But we're not making a decision based on that.
No.
I didn't totally follow that.
Yeah, it's zero sum.
Okay, so we finished our public comment. Uh, moving on to our first public hearing. Uh, I get a motion to open the public hearing for PB twenty-five sixteen, thirteen Water Street.
Seven. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, are there any, anyone here to make a public comment?
Uh, Tony Savino. Come up to the table, Savino. Thank you.
Did you ever both? I have a statement to read. I just have about sixty seconds of the time. I've lived in New Paltz on and off, on and off since nineteen seventy-seven when I was a student at, at SUNY. I've lived here full-time for the past ten years since I retired. Uh, five years ago, I purchased a little cottage on a quaint little street with modest houses. I've put a lot of money and sweat equity into my property to improve it. That quaint little street is now dominated by the construction of a very large three-story hotel inappropriate for the street by any objective standards. This has lowered the value of my property. The house at thirteen Water Street, located some twenty feet from mine, was scheduled to be at home for employees of the hotel, according to the original site plan signed by the hotel's owners. Now the owners of the hotel want to change that agreement to use the house for short-term rentals. In effect, moving the hotel business literally a few feet from my home. If the owners of the hotel were honest and had known the house next to mine would be used for commercial purposes, I would have sold my property long ago. I vehemently oppose allowing thirteen Water Street to be used as a commercial property. Thank you.
Did I give a copy of that? Are you able to?
Is anyone else here tonight uh, to make a public comment on thirteen Water Street? Anyone online? Case?
Uh, I don't believe so.
All right. Uh, I get a motion to close the public hearing for thirteen Water Street. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, moving on to the application review then, could we have uh, PB twenty-five sixteen, thirteen Water Street? Anybody there, everyone?
Is it okay if I address the comments?
Yes.
So uh, to be clear, um, the board had asked me to write the new narratives. Uh, how are we going to run the hotel? And um, yes, you were correct that part of that narrative was to have an employee house, which would be temporary housing because in our experience, an employee is home safe with us temporarily. So rather than have that home vacant, also part of our narrative was to use it as a room. Like an additional room, right? Wasn't being used by employees. So I think that was clear. I think in the narratives, it was clear. Um, I don't know if you saw that, but I can certainly share it with no problem. Um, to address the real estate values and uh, and hotels that, uh, that we're building right now. Um, I would tell you that real estate values in the properties around ones that we have invested in and, you know, for a lot of work and sweat here, similar to yourself in your house that you've done. Um, we uh, have watched real estate values go up around our properties. In Woodstock, in Kingston, um, you know, we, we've also put some money in the effort and the time that we've put into um, building and building homes. We've raised value around the properties that we've actually developed. Um, I don't know what you know about the hotel, but it's uh, certainly going to be um, a lot safer to run, to, to walk, to bike, to to drive around that particular site. Now, maybe not so much. I see maybe disagreeing with it. That's okay. Um, that's why we're here and uh, the, the site line is gonna be a lot clearer uh, around that property once the fence comes down. Um, even to the fact that we pushed the fence back so we recently, so we can actually have cars parked in front of it. So um, that, that side line is actually opened up quite a bit. Um, what we plan to do to that home is going to help the values of those homes along that way. So if you decided if you wanted to sell, I think you'd be pleasantly surprised at the number that somebody would be willing to give you. Um, so that, that would be my uh, comment on uh, your comments. And happy again to talk to you further about this. I mean, if you mind, I remember before we leave, we'll be talking about it further. Okay?
Um, is there, so many, are there any questions for me about this? Um, so I assume there are plans to change, uh, new updates to share. Uh, I think the only sort of outstanding question was regarding the uh, easement for the existing structure on the village rail trail, that staircase. What is the current site like?
Yeah, I spoke with the village attorney and um, he said to the blackboard was that he would get with uh, Albert's attorney and draft the language and then if you guys made it a condition of your approval prior to signing the plans, he would take it from there to get the uh, easement down and approve through the local.
Okay.
Are we talking about this one?
That?
Yes.
See, that one's already approved.
I think what we're talking about is the easement for, the easement for that between the two parcels.
That's already approved.
It's filed or the?
Yeah, it's filed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is the um, house being partially on the village property?
Because doing the deck on, actually on village property, you'll need to do some sort of agreement with.
Actually, the deck is already there. We're just actually, we're removing part of it.
Okay, I thought you were building a deck.
No, no, no. I mean, we'll probably, yeah, we'll build, but it's gonna be a smaller footprint.
That's okay. But even if you're building on village property just to protect the village, there'll be, I'll, I'll, I'll let your attorney and little sort out what needs to be made, but there will be some sort of agreement. Because the house is split between villages.
Yes.
I've got a, a question. I mean, I pretty often notice in the current changes that were proposed, there were about five paragraphs about Airbnb and short-term rental.
They're actually directly taken from the existing home. It's just in a different section of, of the village zone. Moving into the, but it's word for word still the same as what's already in the village.
I see. And is this uh, required to those regulations?
And it's in the Gateway District.
I see.
The only, the only place that short-term rentals are not required to be owner occupied is in the Gateway District. I'm not certain why that was done that way, but that's the existing code, so.
We, we are reducing the size of this footprint on this property as well, so. Um, for what that's worth, um, not only the deck, but we're also taking the front.
Taking the front.
Off of it. And the front, that, the good, the good thing about that is, is there'll be even like a wider side. The access, it'll be easier, easier access to, to that stairwell that leads to the, to the rail trail.
Um, great. Okay, were there any other questions from the board? Um, if not, I would like to give a motion to authorize the preparation of the restitution approval with the um, the board mentioned. I'm sorry, no, not the, the public hearing is now closed, but you're welcome to submit your, your comments and write them. Thank you. Um, so, like to give a motion to authorize preparation of the restitution approval um, including the uh, specific condition regarding.
Seven.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll also have a condition about not using the first floor for residential or having.
Oh, right, it's stores. Yeah, it's just storage, yeah. Right, one of the changes that we had, I'll worry here down the, 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 uh, our, check the town.
Okay, great.
Can you just clarify that's your site plan and special use book?
Yes, yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Um, next we have PB twenty-five, oh, sorry, actually uh, PB twenty-five seventeen eighty-five North Chestnut Street. Getting started now.
Yes.
Welcome, I, I guess let's, let's start out by, uh, if you could just give us a uh, update on anything that's new, anything that's changed with the plans since you were last here?
Nothing's changed. The site plan hasn't changed. Um, the design hasn't changed. Um, the use has not changed. And so we're just, we missed the extension date. Um, we are anticipating breaking ground this year as long as the board gets us there. Um, the financing is in place and we're looking forward to starting this project.
Understood, but we asked for some specific things to be included on the site plan at the last meeting. Uh, did you see those comments, those?
So, um, Andy was in touch with Mike and as far as I know, he just answered all the questions um, that you guys had regarding, I believe, was the state role.
He sent an email that's included in the municipal app and then he referenced the document uh, that he had sent back in twenty twenty-one, I believe, where he answered the conditions. He said he answered the conditions of the approval in red. Um, it's one of the municipal app link.
So, yeah, I see, I see this um, document. I see he, you know, has listed a few answers to these specific conditions, I guess, from the twenty twenty-one resolution. Um, and it, you know, we responded to the fire department comments via email and revised plans in November twenty twenty-one. Um, there were additional conditions that we, we talked about though. Uh, so let's uh, let's go back to that, that previous resolution. We can go through it again. Um, let me see if I can pull it up here.
It's uh, a good answer, the twenty twenty-four application on the agenda is that it's a twenty twenty-four resolution of the global.
Uh, right.
While you're doing that, uh, just for the board, the county did let me refer it to them, so it's on their agenda for tomorrow night.
Great.
I did not send it to the engineer because I wanted to wait to make sure you saw we had a full statement. So I just sent it to the county on the ground, but you allowed it to go through.
Um, okay, so the twenty twenty-four uh, resolution of approval included a list of, uh, let's see, nine, the twenty-four specific conditions. Um, we asked that the site plan be updated to show all these and, and uh, seems like according to Andy, some of them have been addressed already, such as the Um. You know, outstanding issues raised by the fire department. Um.
Just to clarify, I don't think we asked for all of them to be, because some of them will be done.
Right, right, yeah. Not all of them are, have specific things to to change. Um. But uh, let's see, that some of them include. So the, there was something about the lighting design, was that?
That's been provided.
Shaun, okay. Um.
Was all, you know, downward facing. They call it. Yeah, dogs back in line, right? We had a light engineer that we, I remember that we paid for a design ad and submitted to you guys.
Uh, okay, there's a specific condition, prior signing of the plans, the site plan shall be amended to provide by for one dual port. Vehicle charging stations or C two parking spaces, is that shown on the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, I, can you show me where that is?
He sent them all the plan, he sent all the plan.
Andy sent, resend everything, it's on those plans because.
Okay, so you don't have.
He didn't, he didn't resend me, he just said it's the same plan as his last.
So, so you don't have the the site plan?
Unfortunately, he couldn't make it here. But we'll, um, we can, so if you wanna. We can go over what um. Mandatory things on the next meeting for the specific meeting, not at a later date, that's gonna get us to. Get you to. You know, issue a public hearing, so you want a site plan that says the um. The lighting design, right? Lighting design and you request.
Well, I I mean. Maybe it has a lighting design, I'm I'm going through it again.
Okay.
Uh, but, does this? I believe the latest site plan we have is the one dated um, twenty twenty one, November tenth. Um, and.
We should have submitted one in twenty four, because I remember coming here and going through a public hearing and. Um, submitting one, so maybe it's not in the file, but we can request it and get it to you guys really quickly.
Yeah, uh, let's, let me just see if I can find that. Now, we certainly, I definitely don't see anything from twenty twenty four in here. The latest site plans that we have are from twenty twenty one.
Okay.
So, maybe there's just a miscommunication here.
Sure.
Uh. We don't have that that copy, um, but. Again. There are some very specific conditions about. Things that should be included on the site plan that we'd like to see before we approve.
Sure, do you, I mean, is it possible that you can? What you're looking at there, you'll need, because not like the, Emily said that not all twenty are required. To get the approval.
Right, just the ones that say the site plan.
Just the ones that, okay, just the ones that are regarding the site plan.
Yeah.
Okay, that's easy enough. Okay, and then, um, Mike, do you think you can send this over to the engineer so that? For the next meeting?
That's up to the board if they think they have enough, have everything completed, but. If you get me the updates with whatever they want asked for, then I can get it to the engineer.
Okay, that sounds fair.
So, so we could, I mean, I'm comfortable in making a motion to refer it to the engineer when when we get the updated site plan?
We did that last meeting, so that's why I didn't send it. I wasn't sure.
Great. So that's ready?
I think Andy might have thought that that site plan was already complete, but we'll circle back with him and get you. The the right one.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's he's a busy guy, he doesn't have time to review every little detail with that.
Not considering pay, you should email.
And, I mean, does. Does the board want to go through like Andy's responses and just see if there's anything additional there? Um.
I can put them up on the screen if that helps.
Yep, that would be helpful.
So you want the responses from Andy?
Was, were his responses? I'm not looking at it right now, in line and red to the twenty twenty four plan approval or to the twenty twenty one?
They were, they were sent in twenty twenty.
But, but I thought they were the same, they, we just kept.
According to him, they were.
Yeah, nothing changed.
The first one, for instance, asks for, um. It says that we need receipt from the village engineer of a letter certifying that all deficiencies have been remedied. And Andy's response says we will, we provided a response. That they provided a response, but did we ever get something from the village engineer, you know, so we need really to close the loop on all of these things.
Right, if if the, if the condition is that we have a. Thing from the engineer, then we need the certification from the engineer, so talking about whether or not we like the response. Doesn't tell us that the engineer is okay with it.
Right, we need that document.
Okay. Won't he, I mean, we're referring it to him, so. Won't he also be reviewing it then?
He's also the village engineer.
No, he's the.
So who's our, uh, Brittany or Larry, I said, well, I think we, the village has changed engineers.
Yeah, we'd have to find out the status, I'm not sure if that's finished yet, but. It might be Dennis, it might be another, it might make more sense to send this to Dennis, only because he reviewed it the first time. As long as he's still willing to look at it.
Got it. Um.
Sorry, I'm trying to locate the. Response to the department. Okay, we got it here. Should be up on the screen there now.
Right, um, okay, please.
Scroll there.
Scroll down along.
Yeah.
Um, that was. Number two, response number two. So just one minute. Um. Right, okay, so we have. We have the traffic response as well, I guess, in the in the files. Um.
Well, but do we have a, you know, or a letter from the traffic, from our traffic engineer?
Yeah, we do, that's, that's actually in the agenda, that's the uh. Uh, it's one of the links, I apologize. I may have not.
Right, now, I I see uh, twenty twenty one, our traffic review response.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's updated after November tenth, twenty twenty one?
Uh, no, it's.
November twelfth, twenty one.
Right, but it looks like there's further correspondence in twenty twenty one, so. Which one is the one that says that the PDE has certified all issues have been resolved? Because it says that the PDE had a memo on October nineteenth saying that they still didn't have things resolved. And then it says the applicant responded on November tenth, twenty twenty one. And that, so the last thing we're left with is the applicant's response, not the engineer's certification.
Um.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so maybe, we'll look for that.
I know at some point, twenty twenty one, the site plans were signed, so.
Oh, they were signed?
Yeah, because otherwise it wouldn't have, it, it, yeah, yeah.
Well, does that mean these things were fulfilled?
I mean, and then we came back in twenty four, and then you guys signed it again. But I feel like there's just might be a missing file on this photograph somewhere. Which is fine, it's somewhere, so we'll find it also.
Yeah, I mean, if Andy has any, when I talked, I talked to him on Thursday and. Walk him through what I had and the status of it, and he, in his words. Nothing has changed since that, but I. I hear what Nikki's saying, and I I would tend to agree with her comment, that it may may not have been reviewed after that.
When were the plans signed, do you know, after twenty four or after twenty one?
I was just going based on Alex's opinion that they were signed, but, you know, I could be incorrect on that. I believe the twenty twenty one ones were signed, I'm not sure about the twenty twenty four ones. So bear in mind, the twenty twenty one approval expired, so it may. May not matter.
But, like, for example, uh. Alex, when, when, or. There's a memo from the fire chief that says, like, we did not see F T C fire department connection, location on the building for us to connect to.
What number is that?
This is, this is a.
Yeah, which one on this email?
That's number three, and he's saying they responded. And revised the plans in November twenty one, which is the most recent set of plans.
Okay, so this November twenty one should have the. Fire department connection on it.
Someone?
Somewhere. I guess, I'm not sure how to find that, but.
And would you like Andy to highlight that and circle it and then show you when to come back?
If he could get us a paper set too, that would help, because working it off digital is really hard to find some of these things sometimes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, he doesn't have to highlight it, if you, if. You, if he walks you through it, and then you could be here just to point, point it out.
Mm-hmm.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Now, he did say to me on Thursday, the D O T is still in process, they made some headway, but. They're not to the point of. Uh, the complete approval from the D O T.
That's okay, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see anything.
And I think he supplied, yeah, I included it, the the D O T's original comments. And I included that in the, in the link.
So the board has already authorized referring to the engineer, right, so maybe, you know, offline, they can. The staff can go through this together. But the applicant. It will be made.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's great, and uh, just making sure Andy has the. List of special conditions from the um. Twenty twenty four resolution of approval, um. Or reapproval. So he can. Just make sure any of those required site plan changes were addressed.
I emailed that to him along with the last set of comments.
Okay.
And asked him to, to make sure that the final set of plans agreed with those comments, so. And that was when he referred me back to this document from twenty twenty one, I guess.
Yeah, so I I think he he may have just. Um, see all of, all of this. But, um. Any other?
Do you want to go through any of these others?
Um.
Not unless we have sign off that things have been completed, response, noting a response is not helpful.
Okay.
I think we, yeah, I mean, we do have like the easement.
Yeah, I think it is not, we have some.
Yeah.
I watched that.
So. Some of these certainly are. Uh, completed.
Um, the recreation fees have not been paid, but they have to be paid before signature on the site.
Sure. Right, and then this is just the.
Actually, this was of May, well, this is May fourth, twenty one, where he answered some of these. Yeah, I think he resented me the email and the packet with all this from. The twenty twenty one.
See, the building mounted wall signs proposed for each construction. All right, we'll bring the paper set with us and then. Find out whatever.
Yeah, you can get an email, and then I can send that off to Dennis, sorry, I was to double check the.
Sure, yep, we'll get right on. Have a great time, guys.
You'll have the county comments by next meeting as well.
Okay, that's great, perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
May I just mention one thing, I, it doesn't have to do with the. I, I reviewed the cases on the, on the secret question we were talking about earlier. And after we have issued our approval, we no longer have jurisdiction to go back and change our secret determination. It only says prior to approval, which we've already, um, done our approvals, and that's what the court said. So, um, I think it would be appropriate if, uh. If there were a communication, you know, informing the I D A that this was not considered in our secret review. That is something that you could consider doing, but, um, we can't, we have.
Well, that is. Put your camera, that is time, because the applicant who left just applied for and received a pilot. And here we sit.
Okay, the the one that just left. Oh, how did you?
So, yes.
Find out about, I mean, I didn't know that.
I didn't know it until I read the minutes of the I D A, no, I actually saw, I saw a headline.
Yeah.
Not a really. Great, we find out about things, but I saw.
The Chestnut Square or the one for the hotel?
The man who just left.
The eighty five North Chester. So I, I did attend the public hearing and notified the I D A. That the public hearing was in this room, that they had no approval that it had expired. And they were very interested to know it and hear it, and I was as surprised as Terry was when I read the newspaper that they had awarded. Because I didn't think that. They would award to a project that had expired, so.
Um.
Now, they gave their own, they would have had to have done their own secret or. Adopted the original seeker that was done, the negative declaration that was done for this project. Which they may, may have done.
Right, which was done without.
Which was done in twenty twenty.
Assumption of the pilot, so. Um, okay.
I think, look, it just gets to my point. In the thirty years that I've been around municipal governments in New York State, I can tell you pilot payments are divisive. They are, uh, one municipality or the other, it's gonna hate them. Here's a question for our attorney, well, maybe the village attorney, can the village do their own pilots? Only for affordable ones. That's unfortunate.
Yeah, it's under state law and all the county, county or industrial, I think, maybe city.
Yeah, Syracuse did.
I believe city's better, but.
And and believe it, that blew up when we did it. They are very divisive. Because somebody's losing that.
One thing I've seen in in Dutchess County, the I D A has certain policies for certain types of pilots that are outside the mark. Will only be granted if the taxing authorities, um, agree that we have.
Too, okay, that and a subway job will be your own kind.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're not supposed to approve it if you don't, yeah, they just do it on. Okay. I don't know.
I I didn't know the program you bring up, I, I, I didn't like.
Uh, I mean, this is our. Uh, I mean, this is our opportunity to go through. Seeker again, if we, if we feel like it's.
Does the net deck expire with the local, I mean, I don't know the answer.
Well, the thing is that now we have another. Um, perspective approval, so I think that we have the opportunity then to amend or resend the net deck if we. If conditions have changed.
And just to clarify what we said before, it doesn't go to every moving agency, it goes to every tax authority agency that knows for the public hearing. It goes to the village board, it goes to the town board, it goes to the school, it goes to the county.
Is there any deadline, I mean, some of the projects that are in construction right now fly for pilots?
Uh, I don't, I don't wanna. Speak to the, the rules are very complicated, so I don't wanna say yes or no, I don't know the answer.
It's just pretty bewildering, because it honestly, it doesn't make any sense to me how you could, how it's possible for someone. If you're, um, once the building is completed. Then it's very.
Once the project is completed, I don't believe you can, it's it's for construction, it's not for. It's for construction and the initial operation of it for a period of time.
I see, fifteen years is like the average, maybe it doesn't take that long.
If they don't receive some. Subsidy, then it won't get built, so.
I, I do know projects in the state that have fully constructed and gone back and got pilots, one of which was for thirty years. A thirty year pilot.
Yeah, it doesn't seem.
I know you can do it when, when you're actually, you know, if you're making major changes to your.
Well.
I don't, but I, you know, yeah, I'm not a pilot expert.
They typically do that because of the reduction in sales things, that's why they do it either before construction, during construction, during renovation. But once the project is fully put together, fully occupied. They can go back.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm I'm not aware of that they were happening in Elster County, but I don't know, I'm not gonna say it can or can't happen. But I, I'm not aware of any pilot that where that has happened, I think it's only been changes to the facility that have. Initiated the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they may have it as their own, because you're allowed to make your own policies. Based on the state laws of who you can award pilots to and what types.
That hardly seems fair, you know? I mean. I think there should be some sort of restrictions, at least say for a building is owned by a hedge fund, if that's. Hardly the case, maybe, you know what I mean?
You can't describe, you can't describe the anybody's.
Okay, so this isn't our job, so, no, no, not criticizing, I just don't want to create a record with stuff.
All right.
Mine's being on the record. Don't take my name off, that's the last we take this one.
My.
No, that's a valid thing to bring up, because they have received it according to what the newspapers said, and if you, if the board would like. I'll, I'll inquire to the, uh, IDA for a copy of the approved.
You could please include that, when we get, we see the application next, that would, I appreciate.
I would get to village, we'd, we'd love to see it. It got screwed again, I just will find out how bad.
All right, on that note, I could get a motion to, uh.